Hi, good evening, everybody. We appreciate you being here. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome Dr. Brent Ward from Birmingham United Methodist Church to lead us in an invocation.
Let's bow our heads. Lord, you stood on the hillside with a group of disciples 2,000 years ago and said, "Let your light so shine before others that they might see your good deeds and give praise to your Father in heaven." And so, Lord, we thank you this night for the light of leadership that we celebrate in Milton, Georgia, for our mayor, and for our council, and for community leaders that come to express concerns and needs. And so, Lord, we give you praise tonight for those lights. We praise you also, Lord, for the light of our police force and for the protection that they bring and provide for the sacrifices they make. And so, we pray your blessing on them this night, God. We thank you, Lord, for the light of your love, which, when shared together, can bond us and develop us and grow us into your image, even as a community. So, God, may that light so shine here tonight. And we pray these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Ward. We appreciate you being here tonight. And again, welcome, everybody. Glad to see everybody here tonight. We've got several items on our agenda, and we appreciate you being here and look forward to either making a presentation or listening to what you have to say. So, at this point, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, May 18th, 2015, to order. And Sudi, if you would please call the roll and make any general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the May 18th, 2015, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or a general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. So, please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman was planning on calling in, so that may happen a little bit.
I think she may have changed.
Changed, okay.
Mind on that.
And Councilmember Joe Longoria is absent this evening for the record. Tonight, we are honored to have the Sons of the American Revolution lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please rise?
[inaudible] To the front, left. Ready? Off. To the right, face. Salute my Pledge of Allegiance.
To the dividing of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To the left, face. To the front, behind. Ready? Off. Right, face. Just a minute.
As always, thank you to the Sons of the American Revolution for being here and leading us in our pledge. Okay. Will city clerk please call the first item?
Our next item is approval of the meeting agenda. This is Agenda Item Number 15-132.
Okay. Do I have any change? I don't believe we need, staff needs any changes, anything, council on the agenda? And if not, we'll ask for a motion on the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Hewitt for approval, and a second from, sound like, Councilmember Koontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous, Sudi. Okay. Next item is public comment. I'm not sure, do we have any general public comment?
We do not start this evening.
We've probably got some public comment on items, so I'm gonna go ahead and read the rules. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinion, opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. Now, that's on general public comments. Obviously, when we do have an item, and if someone gets up and speaks it, they would be specific to that item. There's no, there's no discussion of items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk, which are the yellow cards, I believe they're in the back there. And you're welcome to, even if later you decide to, you wanna make a public comment, you can fill one out and turn in after the fact. Please remember, this is not time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, you'll come forward, you'll speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the, for the record, and you'll have five minutes for remarks. Sudi, if we can move on to the consent agenda, if you'd please read those items.
First item is approval of the April 27th, 2015, regular city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 15, 133. Next is approval of the financial statements for the period ending April 2015. Agenda item number 15, 134. Our third consent agenda item is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Peoples &amp; Quigley, Inc., to provide professional engineering services for the design of the fire station number 42, septic field replacement. Agenda item number 15, 135. Next, approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and SiteMed North America, LLC, for firefighter and police officer wellness physicals. Agenda item number 15, 136. Next, approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Gibson Landscape Services, LLC, for tree installation at the Thomas Byrd Senior Center. Agenda item number 15, 137. Our sixth consent agenda item is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Universal Engineering Sciences, Inc., for geotechnical work on the City Hall site. Agenda item number 15, 138. Next, approval of the acquisition of 0.063 acres of right-of-way and 0.088 acres of construction and maintenance easement at 12775 Birmingham Highway from Fulton County Board of Education for a combined purchase price of $55,500. Agenda item number 15, 139. Our eighth consent agenda item is approval of a change order between the City of Milton and BM&amp;K PC to provide state Route 372, Crab Apple Road, Birmingham Highway, intersection improvement, right-of-way services. Agenda item number 15, 140. Next, approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Bartow Paving Company, Inc., for new Providence Road stormwater improvement project. Agenda item number 15, 141.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda after she reads the rest.
It's a long one.
See, we got another page.
Continue on to.
Okay.
Yep.
Our 10th item is approval of an agreement between the City of Milton and Special Events Network, LLC, for the movies at Flix and Food Trucks Summer Event Series on June 6th, July 11th, and August 1st, 2015. Agenda item number 15, 142. Next, approval of a change order to the professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Town Planning and Design, LLC, to develop a conservation subdivision ordinance. Agenda item number 15, 143. Next, approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Triscape's, Inc., for the re-sodding of three rectangular athletic fields. Agenda item number 15, 144. Next, approval of the First Amendment to the Agreement for Outside Providers between the City of Milton and Newtown Recreation, Inc. Agenda item number 15, 145. Our 14th and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of the following subdivision plats. Sharon Danville Minor Subdivision Plat, create three lots. R Venture LLC Minor Subdivision Plat, create two lots. Ronnie Glenn Smith and Deborah Dugaron Minor Subdivision Plat, combine lots two and three and remove property line. Liberata McDonald Subdivision Minor Subdivision Plat Revision, revise survey of lots 1A, 1B, and 2. The Manor Enclave Phase 1 Final Plat, create lots 1 through 7 and 45 through 49. Deerfield Green Phase 4 Final Plat Revision, revise lots 102 through 110 and eliminate lot 360. This is Agenda Item Number 15, 146.
I'll try that again. Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion for approval, from Councilmember Luss, and a second from Councilmember Koontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous on the consent agenda. Okay. We'll move on to reports and presentations. Sudi, if you'll please call out the next item.
Our next item is a proclamation honoring Cambridge and Milton students who chose to serve their country in a military career. This is being presented by Councilmember Bill Luss.
Thank you, Sudi. Gives me great privilege and honor to read this proclamation tonight, knowing that it's only about 1% of our total population that serves in our military. Consider that, 1% who is protecting and ensuring the freedoms of the other 300-plus something people in this United States. So, I commend each and every one of you. And I'll read this proclamation, then afterwards, if these students would come up, and we'll present it to them. It's a proclamation honoring Cambridge and Milton students who chose to serve their country in a military career. Whereas, one of the main responsibilities of our federal government is to provide for the national defense, and whereas, the branches of the United States military have a long and prestigious history of shaping and producing the finest young minds in America, producing not only soldiers, but also scholars, national leaders, and diplomats. And whereas, every year, thousands of students across America choose to pursue both higher education and military service by attending U.S. Military Service Academies, military universities, or enrolling in officer training programs. And whereas, in order to qualify for selection, these students must excel in academic, athletic, and leadership abilities. And whereas, these students will be developed mentally, morally, and physically, and will be imbued with the highest ideals of duty and loyalty, and with the core values of honor, courage, and commitment before being commissioned as officers. And whereas, through their dedication, these students have displayed exemplary character by choosing to better serve their country, their community, their families, and themselves at a time in their lives when such an important choice is honorable. And whereas, Cambridge High School students, Jaden Carter, will join the Marines. Kayson Johnson will join the Navy. Ankers away. Ethan Jones will attend the Air Force ROTC program at Georgia Tech. Britt Spurka will attend the Army ROTC program at the University of Georgia. Milton High School students, Corey Armick, will attend the ROTC program at the University of Georgia. Connor Cole has been appointed to the United States Merchant Marine Academy. Joseph Leckenby will join the United States Marine Corps. Nick Steinhaus will attend the Military Academy at West Point on appointment. Therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the City of Milton, hereby honor Milton students and Cambridge students who choose to serve their country in a military career given under our hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia, on this, the 18th day of May in the year 2015. And I think we're ready. And if these students would come forward in council with mayor, let's go down.
Thank you. [inaudible] 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 Also, I'd like to recognize Dr. Ed Spurka from Cambridge, Mr. Hank Bala, Assistant Principal at [inaudible]. Thank you for which we, yeah, thank you for your leadership. Thanks, guys. [inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
Again, thank you, guys, very much. You make us proud. All right, Sudi, if you'll please call the next item.
Our next item is a proclamation recognizing Memorial Day. And this is being presented by Councilmember Bill Luss.
And at this time, I'd like to call the color guard from Piedmont Chapter, Sons of the American Revolution Forward.
Ready? Off. To the right, face.
Since next Monday, 25th of May, we will be celebrating Memorial Day here in Milton. Ceremony begins at 10:00 a.m. Invite each and every one of you here to attend next Monday night, or Monday morning, rather. And at that time, we will read the proclamation again, but we'd like to read it this evening and present it to, yes, say, our Piedmont Chapter Color Guard. This is a proclamation for Memorial Day. Whereas Memorial Day was first officially proclaimed on May 5th, 1868, by General John Logan in his General Order Number 1, or 11, and in 1968 by Act of Congress, it was determined that the holiday would be observed on the last Monday in May. And whereas, from the opening battles of the American Revolution, through the turmoil of the Civil War, to the World War I, World War II, Korea and Vietnam, to the Persian Gulf, and today's operations in the War on Terror in Afghanistan, Iraq, and all around the world, the members of our military have built a tradition of honorable and faithful service. And whereas, as we observe Memorial Day, remember the more than 1 million Americans who have died to preserve our freedom, and the more than 140,000 citizens who were prisoners of war, and all those who were declared missing in action. We also honor our veterans for their dedication to America and their sacrifices. And whereas, we have honor and privileges of living in a free country, and Georgia has a rich history of great leaders who died fighting for our great nation. Today, all who wear the uniform of the United States are serving at a crucial hour in history, and each has answered a great call to serve our nation on the front lines of freedom. Let us pray for the safety and strength of our troops, and for God's blessing on them and their families, and for those who have lost loved ones. And whereas, on this Memorial Day, we honor our fallen soldiers and their commitment to our country, and their legacy of patriotism and sacrifices of many men and women who answered the nation's call to duty and fought with honor and valor, and, in the end, gave the ultimate sacrifice to safeguard the rights of all Americans. And whereas, by giving their lives in this cause of freedom, these heroes have protected and inspired all Americans, and we are truly grateful for their sacrifice. And whereas, the citizens of Milton join with people across the nation in remembrance of those who died while courageously serving their country during war. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the City of Milton, Georgia, hereby dedicate and proclaim Monday, May 25th, 2015, as Memorial Day in the City of Milton, and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens, given under its hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia, on this, the 18th day of May, 2015. Go back down, we'll present these.
[inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
All right, Sudi, if you'd please call the next item.
Our next item is a proclamation recognizing National Public Works Week, and this is being presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. We've got a proclamation recognizing outstanding Public Works Department employees in recognition of National Public Works Week. Tonight, we've got Mark Law, Jimmy Sanders, Roddy Moats, let's see, we've got Sarah Leaders and Carter Lucas, two that I'm going to present this proclamation once I, once I read it. National Public Works Week, whereas public work services are provided in our community, are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas, such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees who are responsible for and must plan, design, build, operate, and maintain systems and programs such as stormwater systems, streets, bridges, and sidewalks. And whereas, the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas, the year 2015 marks the 55th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of Milton, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17th through 23rd, 2015, as National Public Works Week in the City of Milton, and we urge all to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize their contributions, which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, welfare, and quality of life, and that's given under my hand and the seal of the City of Milton on the 18th day of May, 2015. And if our public works employees, staff would step forward along with the council, we'll present this.
This is a proclamation remembering Peace Officers Memorial Day and its origin in Georgia, presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Thank you, Sooty. I've got a proclamation here for Peace Officers Memorial Day and its origin in Georgia. Whereas, the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15 falls is a National Police Week. And whereas, Robert Forsyth of Augusta, Georgia, an American patriot who served as captain in Lee's legion under Henry "Light Horse" Harry Lee, was selected by President George Washington to be the first United States Marshal for the state of Georgia, and became the first U.S. Marshal and first of more than 200 U.S. Marshals and deputies killed in the line of duty. And whereas, from that first tragedy to present day, the members of the Law Enforcement Agency of the City of Milton play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the City of Milton. And whereas, it's important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of the Law Enforcement Agency, and that members of our Law Enforcement Agency remember their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the men and women of the Law Enforcement Agency of the City of Milton unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I, the mayor and the City of Milton, call upon all citizens of the City of Milton and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of the City of Milton to remember Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made this ultimate sacrifice in service to their community, or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. This is given under my hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia, on the 18th day of May, 2015. If my council would step forward with me, and if all of our peace officers that are here would please step forward. You know, I always like to plug in, these guys, you know, I think everybody knows it, but sometimes we forget about it, but every one of these guys gets up every morning and puts their life on the line for strangers or for our citizens, and people like us, you know, sometimes we just need to remind ourselves of that, that's obviously an important job, but these guys are definitely committed, so we just want to let you guys know, we really appreciate it.
If everybody can kind of move on here a little bit, because I just still want to get the opposite chairs.
Squeeze it.
There we go. Okay, table three, and one, two, three. Make sure I got it.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Okay. Sooty, if you'll please call the next item, the final presentation item.
Our next item is Presentation of the City of Milton Fiscal Year 2014 Annual Audit. This is being presented by Adam Frayley, CPA with Malden and Jenkins.
Okay. Good evening. Thanks for having me here this evening. I'm Adam Frayley with Malden and Jenkins, the auditing firm for the City of Milton, and I'm here tonight to present the year-end audit for the year September 30, 2014. What you should have in your packets is the city's comprehensive annual financial report, I'll refer to as the CAFR, and then you also should have our annual audit agenda, which is the presentation summarizing the results of the audit that I'm going to go over with you all. And if you have any questions, I go through, please stop me, and I'll try to answer those. Also on the screen is the audit agenda, and I'll go through there again, Malden, Jenkins. This first page is really just kind of a summary of what's in here and what I'm going to cover this evening. It'll talk about the audit opinion, a little bit about the financial statements and compliance reports, some of our required communications under government auditing standards, any accounting recommendations or other related matters, and then, of course, to answer any questions. On page two here, it's talking about Malden and Jenkins, it's talking specifically about our governmental practice. Obviously, we've serviced a lot of governments. The governmental sector is the largest sector within our firm, so it's a large niche area within our firm for which we provide about 65,000 hours of service annually and almost 300 clients per year. The next page is some of the other industries that we serve and some other services that we provide. Okay. And then on page four, this is the results of the audit. It talks a little bit about the responsibilities of management, it talks about the responsibilities of us as auditors, and it talks about the opinion that we rendered. The financial statements are the city's responsibility. Annually, the city is required to put together a financial report that is audited by external CPAs and submitted with the state of Georgia within six months of its year-end. The city did put together such a report. Our job is to render an opinion on that report as to its fair presentation. We conducted our audit test work, and we did render our opinion, which is commonly called a clean opinion, but it is an unmodified audit report, meaning that we believe that these financial statements are materially correct and are fairly presented in all material respects. On page five, this talks a little bit about the fact that the city does a little more than what the, or does a lot more than what the state law requires, which is getting an annual financial report published. The City of Milton annually prepares this CAFR, which you'll see on page five includes an introductory section. It also includes a statistical section that provides information on the city going back to its incorporation of both financial statistics as well as non-financial statistical information. Just a wealth of information. The city's CAFR is submitted annually to the Government Finance Officers Association, which is a national organization who will evaluate the CAFR to meet its program requirements for award of certificate for excellence in financial reporting. Each year that the city's been incorporated, they've actually gotten that award, and I know that this year with the 2014 CAFR, the plan is to submit that as well to receive the award again. So, real good job there, a lot of work and hard work goes into that by your finance department. On page seven, the general fund is the city's main operating fund. You can see on page seven there, got a pie chart of the breakdown of the revenues of the general fund, obviously taxes being the largest revenue source of the general fund, followed by licensing and permits. On page eight at the top there, it talks a little bit about the revenues and how the revenues this year were about $25 million compared to last year of just under $20 million. So you'll see the increase there, and you'll see the, in the tables below, you'll see the trends in the taxes, property taxes, sales taxes. Property and other type taxes behaved consistently this year compared to the last few years. Sales taxes, you can see, increased about 50%. So that is good there. In the table below there is the other revenues trends, and you can see most of those are on an incline with license and permits being the largest. On page nine, it talks about the general fund expenditures, public safety being the largest expenditure category of the city, followed by general government there. Total expenditures were about $14.5 million compared to $13.9 million last year. And you'll see at the bottom of page nine, the difference between revenues and expenditures. You can see this year that the general fund showed revenues of just slightly above expenditures, so while both revenues and expenditures increased from prior year, you'll see that revenues did exceed expenditures, resulting, as you'll see on page 10, resulting in an end-of-the-year fund balance for the general fund of about $10.8 million, which is about $1.3 million increase from the prior year. Also, it's important to note, that $10.8 million, the general fund's budget annually is about $15.5 million, so you can see there is about eight months of reserves, if you will, in fund balance of annual expenditures. The bottom of page 10 talks about the citywide financial statements. This is all the governmental funds combined together, putting on the capital assets and debt and everything of the city. And you'll see there that the net position, which is kind of the overall equity, if you will, of the city, increased from about $67.5 million to over $73 million. It is important to note that a large portion of that $73 million is made up of infrastructure assets, capital assets, roads and bridges, et cetera, to the tune of about $52 million, leaving about $20.4 million in unrestricted net position, meaning those monies set aside available for future spending, et cetera. The next couple pages, I'm going to just skim by. It's really a Cliff Notes version of the footnotes to the financial statements, so as you're looking at the CAFR, you can see back here what each of those footnotes are about. And starting on page 13, goes into our required communications. Talks about accounting estimates, management judgments. As with any financial statements, there are judgments and estimates involved, depreciation expense, allowance for accounts receivables, et cetera. We've audited those, and we're in agreement that those are fairly stated with the amounts that management has stated. It talks about any significant difficulties encountered during the audit, audit adjustments or uncorrected adjustments. We didn't have any difficulties with management, they were completely cooperative through the audit process, getting us everything we needed for a smooth audit, and we certainly appreciate that. We did have a few audit adjustments, they've been posted to the general ledger of the city as well as to these, within this financial reporting CAFR that you have. There were no uncorrected audit adjustments. On page 16, talks about whether there's any disagreements with management. We did not have any disagreements with management or other significant issues that we discussed with management. And on page 16, we did have two findings. These resulted from audit adjustments that were noted during our test work that were identified by the audit team. Both of them, again, resulted in audit adjustments that were posted to the general ledger and the CAFR of the city. One had to do with recording additional expenditures and liabilities at the city's year-end, September 30. These expenditures were recorded, it was just that cutoff timing at year-end. The other one had to do with recording infrastructure assets that were being maintained on a subsidiary-type listing and just needed to be recorded within capital assets of the city. And then at the bottom of page 16, you'll see where we've got one management point. This is just other item that did not raise to the level of our standards of having to be reported as a finding, but is just another recommended for improvement in the internal controls of the city. On page 17, this is something that we've been pointing out for the last couple years. It's a section where we've got new accounting standards coming down the pipeline, and a big standard this coming year is GASB-68. Again, we've been talking about for a couple years, well, this next year is implementation year. The city will see changes in its financial statements. This new standard will require with the city's defined benefit pension plan, the net pension liability, which is the difference between the actuarial value of the assets and the actuarially determined long-term liability. The difference between those is the net pension liability that has to actually be recorded on the financial statements as a liability in the city's government-wide financial statements. So you're going to see that come on next year. Net position of the city will change due to that, and we're estimating, again, actuaries have to do their actual analysis, but if it was based on this year's number, it'd be about a $418,000 addition to liabilities and reduction of equity or net position. So that's, it is a real big change, you'll see additional disclosures and information in the actual financial report, and just want to point that out. The last item is on page 21, and just wanted to remind the city again of the free continuing education classes that we put on for management of the city, council members, anyone that wants to do that. They're free of charge to our clients, and you can see the topics there. You can even see down at the bottom, number 21, where we put on classes related to this new GASB-68 standard. We're actually planning on another one here very soon on that topic as well, just because it's kind of the year of implementation and just to kind of do a refresher course on that. So if y'all know of anyone that, you know, y'all would like to attend that or yourselves, we would welcome that. So that's the end of my presentation. If you've got any questions for me.
May I have any question for Adam?
You went through it, I was curious what the chart was before you went to page nine.
I'm sorry?
What was the chart before you went to page nine? We haven't seen it, but the...
The chart?
Yeah. You've got a lot of things going from the lower left to the upper right, and I just wanted to see what that was. In regards to...
That there?
Yeah, okay, that's...
The other one had to do with recording infrastructure assets that were being maintained on a subsidiary type listing and just needed to be recorded within capital assets of the city. And then at the bottom of page 16, you'll see where we got one management point. This is just other item that did not raise to the level of our standards of having to be reported as a finding, but is just another recommended for improvement in the internal controls of the city. On page 17, this is something that we've been pointing out for the last couple of years. It's a section where we've got new accounting standards coming down the pipeline, and a big standard this coming year is GASB 68. Again, we've been talking about for a couple of years. Well, this next year is implementation year. The city will see changes in its financial statements. This new standard will require, with the city's defined benefit pension plan, the net pension liability, which is the difference between the actuarial value of the assets and the actuarially determined long-term liability. The difference between those is the net pension liability that has to actually be recorded on the financial statements as a liability in the city's government-wide financial statements. So you're gonna see, you're gonna see that come on next year. Net position of the city will change due to that. And we're estimating, again, actuaries have to do their actual analysis, but if it was based on this year's number, it'd be about a $418,000 addition to liabilities and reduction of equity or net position. So that's, it is a real big change. You'll see additional disclosures and information in the actual financial report, and just want to point that out. The last item is on page 21. And just wanted to remind the city again of the free continuing education classes that we put on for management of the city, council members, anyone that wants to do that. They're free of charge to our clients, and you can see the topics there. You can even see down at the bottom, number 21, where we put on classes related to this new GASB 68 standard. We're actually planning on another one here very soon on that topic as well, just because it's kind of the year of implementation and just to kind of do a refresher course on that. So if y'all know of anyone that, you know, y'all would like to attend that or yourselves, we would welcome that. So that's the end of my presentation. If you've got any questions for me.
Do you have any question for Adam?
You went through it. I was curious what the chart was before you went to page nine.
I'm sorry?
What was the chart before you went to page nine? We haven't seen it, but the...
The chart?
Yeah. It had a lot of things going from the lower left to the upper right, and I just wanted to see what that was. In regards to... Yeah, okay, that's, I wanted to see that.
Yeah, it's just the other revenues outside of the sales taxes and property taxes and other, outside of taxes. You've got the other revenues, like the items listed there, and just the trend information of the last five years with those.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Thank you very much for being here and presenting that. Stacy, thank you to you and your staff for a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Suti, if you'll please read our first presentation.
Consideration of revisions to Milton City Code, Chapter 22, Fire Prevention and Protection. This is Agenda Item Number 15147.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's it. We just need a vote on them.
You know what, I'm sorry. But you still had to read it. Do I have a motion second of this first presentation, Adam?
I move to approve Agenda Item 15147.
Second.
I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we don't have any items under public here, so we'll move on to our zoning agenda. Suti, if you'll please call the first item.
I'll read the zoning rules first. At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning, petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for the meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. The city clerk will be keeping track of the time and will inform you periodically of the remaining time for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. Before beginning your presentation or comment, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization, if applicable. The Planning Commission has heard the rezoning agenda items, and recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. The applicant shall not submit material to the council during this meeting unless requested to do so. When an applicant or an opponent of a rezoning action has made within two years, immediately preceding the filing of the zoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official of the local government, which will consider the application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the Planning Commission meeting. A violation of relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member, and you did not file a disclosure prior to the Planning Commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our first zoning item this evening is Consideration of RZ 15-05, Chapter 64, Article 17, Development Standards, to Create Standards and Penalties for the Request of Demolition Permits Within the City of Milton. Agenda Item Number 15096. First presentation was at the April 13 city council meeting. This was discussed at the April 20 city council work session was deferred at the April 27 regular city council meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The proposed text amendment was created based on the need to give more teeth to the demolition permit review process by the Design Review Board. As zoning ordinance currently exists, the only requirement is for all buildings that apply for demolition permit, that they shall be reviewed by the City of Milton Design Review Board. And unless a structure has been designated historic building by the City of Milton Historic Preservation Commission, any building can be demolished. Both the Planning Commission and the Design Review Board asked staff to create criteria in which the Design Review Board can evaluate all proposed buildings applying for demolition permit. The proposed criteria is similar to the criteria for evaluating demolition applications for historically designated structures. The Planning Commission at its March 25, 2015 meeting recommended approval of the proposed standards and penalties for the request of demolition permits with the following additions. And those additions are outlined in yellow, in yellow on your proposed text amendment that is before you. I'm happy to answer any questions on this item, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have any questions for Kathy on this? Let me ask, Suti, do we have any public comment on this?
We do not.
Okay. I'll close the hearing then. There's no public comment, but continue to be open for any questions. Okay, we don't have any questions at this point. Anybody thinking about a question or need to look through? Thank you, Kathy. Now I'll open up for a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve Agenda Item 15096.
Second.
I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Moore. Any discussion? Hearing not on...
Yeah, I don't know if I can approve that motion. I mean, our Historical Preservation Commission can't meet a quorum right now. I don't want to pass legislation onto another body in order to achieve an objective. I think we need a Historic Preservation Society in order to do it. I don't think there's any recompense to the old pay property owners if we decide a structure is historic, and they do need to demolish it for whatever reason. So in my mind, I think it constitutes a little bit of a taking, and I just can't go for it.
Okay. Somebody else? All right, I have a motion for approval. Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's four to one, Suti, with Councilmember Koots in opposition. All right, Suti, if you will call the next item, please, number two.
Next item is Consideration of RZ 15-10, to amend Article 7, Division 6, Section 64, 1141, Single Family Uses as It Relates to Lot Coverage. This is Agenda Item Number 15123. First presentation was at the May 4, 2015 regular city council meeting, and discussed at the May 11 work session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The mayor and city council requested that staff initiate a text amendment that would provide limited flexibility to the current maximum 20 percent lot coverage for single-family residences within the rural Milton overlay district. After discussions with the city attorney, staff has proposed to increase the maximum lot coverage from 20 to 25 percent, rather than having the community development director administratively increase that lot coverage, as was previously discussed. Staff also has proposed to include only the AG1, R1, R2, and CUP zoning districts within the rural overlay district, and exclude properties within the Birmingham overlay district except properties zoned AG1. At the April 22, 2015 Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission voted unanimously, six to zero, to deny the proposed text amendment, based on their opinion that the current 20 percent lot coverage remain. The Planning Commission stated that this amendment is targeted for only a few situations, and property owners should build the appropriate sized house on the associated lot. Open for any questions.
Any questions, Kathy, right now? Now I'll open up. Do we have any public comment?
We do have three public comments in support.
Okay.
First one, first one comes from Ken Cowery.
My name is Ken Corey. I live at 1010 Glen Mill Court in Milton, Georgia. I want to thank Mayor Lockwood and the council for allowing me to address this meeting. I'm here to speak in favor of this proposal. I respect the unique character of Milton, and it's the reason why my wife and I moved to Milton. It's the reason why we are building a retirement home here for ourselves. But I also recognize that you have to strike a balance between certain interests in a restriction like this. And I know this is not about a specific instance or a specific case, it's about a policy. But it just, so I apologize for using an example that is particular. If you imagine a property, an acre property zoned AG1, and you take the very generous setback requirements, you put in a requirement for a septic field, a reserved septic field, throw in height limitations, you throw in topography issues, you throw in oddities of the plot itself, and trying to stay within this 20 percent restriction is very challenging. I think several members of this council have made suggestions at other meetings about ways that maybe this could be softened a little bit. I think Councilwoman Thurmond asked if maybe other towns should be looked at. I've looked at some of the other towns. I've been unable to find any town in our area that is, that has a 20 percent coverage ratio. Alpharetta and Roswell are 25 percent at the highest, the highest sized lots. I think Councilwoman Thurmond also asked if maybe certain parts of the structure should be excluded from the coverage ratio, like pools, decks, patios. And again, Alpharetta, right next door, excludes those structures and only bases the lot restrict, the coverage ratio on the actual principal business, uh, principal building, excuse me. I, I think that applying a strict 20 percent rule across the board has a lot of unintended consequences. I think it, it does not allow enough flexibility, and I think in the end, it discourages the attraction of high-value homes and the taxes that come with those. So I would respectfully ask that you vote in favor of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Suti, do we have another?
Our next public comment comes from Barry Seegers.
I am Barry Seegers. I am the developer of the Hayfield subdivision and live there. I'm a lifelong resident of Milton and...
Barry, if you don't mind, just for the record, just state your address.
Sure, okay. 13940 Haystack Lane.
Okay. Had to ask.
I'm in favor of the greater lot coverage. In my opinion, you know, as Ken summarized, sometimes in developments, there are some extenuating issues, the topography. The nature of our development is zoned AG1. The setbacks, the septic requirements, and again, the intent to create high-value homes for the benefit of the community was our intent with this development neighborhood. So in my opinion, the 20 percent requirement is a bit stringent. I'm in favor of the 25 percent, but I'm also in favor of some restriction. So beyond that point, I'd like for you to respectfully consider the 25 percent issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Suti, you'll call the next person?
And our last comment comes from Lee Duncan.
Good evening. I'm Lee Duncan. I live at 515 Rivercrest Court, Atlanta, 30328. I represent the Manor Golf and Country Club. We have two members of the board here tonight, Jerry Weir, Vice President of the Manor HOA, and Ed Dunbar. He's the head of the Architecture Review Board. In many cases, we feel that what has been provided is an extremely suitable standard for most areas within the legal description of the overlay. However, certain details have surfaced that present challenges for the applicants, staff, and the consultants associated with the building application process. In most cases, what has been found is an attempt to apply standards called for in the overlay were either very difficult to try to apply or simply imposed in unnecessary hardship. However, due to the dedicated effort of your staff, accommodations have been made at great expensive time and energy, and we think we can provide the City of Milton with a much better approach. I would respectfully submit to you that beyond the modifications submitted in this submittal, much more can be done and should be done. Can we just have simply two weeks to work with your staff to provide you with a meaningful approach, working with people such as Ken and Barry, that would properly align the required standards of the overlay and existing design standards for communities in the overlay? I think that what we can provide you with is a much better approach. It's not going to be something that tries to cover all angles with one ordinance here. There's a multitude of designs that are being proposed in the City of Milton. All of them are very, very desirable in many cases, and I think the accommodations should be considered that would allow more of those designs to go forward. And in the case of the Manor, you have an existing homeowner association with an architecture review board with extremely strict design standards that actually covers more than what you're asking for in this overlay, as opposed to just looking at a height or looking at floor coverage. The design standards cover architectural designs, they cover landscape designs, hardscape designs, the siding of the homes, the siding of any accessory facilities. It is a comprehensive holistic approach that we feel has proven itself in the 10 years the Manor has been in existence, to be extremely popular, enforceable, and a very good neighbor in the City of Milton. I think there's other communities that can also provide a similar approach. What I'm suggesting to you is that allow a period of time to have these communities spend a bit of time with your staff, and I think that we can provide you with a much better approach and a much more sensible application for this overlay. One last thing, and I'm not on the clock, I hope, I want to commend you for the atmosphere. I'm sorry. You set for Memorial Day. Bill, I know you spend a lot of time, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any more public comment?
That's all, sir.
All right, then, I'm gonna close the public hearing. I have a question. Kathy, on this specific item, as pertains to lot coverage, prior, did we, we didn't have any specific percentage in our ordinance, did we?
It's currently a 20. And the request was, the original request was to give me, as the community development director, some flexibility in terms of increasing it up to 25. But having talked to our attorneys, they felt it was too hard to lay out what that criteria would be. So they prefer that we have a set amount, so we assumed it would be 25. So that's where we got that.
But my, my question going back to, at the point before we, we had our overlay at 20, at 20 percent, was there any, before that, was there any limit on size or just basically with setbacks and septic?
Yeah, Robin, can you respond to that, please?
No, nothing specific, no.
Okay. And I know it was, heard a public comment, but the staff looked, is there specific other cities around us that have a 20 percent or not?
If the gentleman who had done the other research, most of the information we gathered was from other jurisdictions, not necessarily close in with us, but other people who had more agricultural type situations. So we're kind of unique in that we do have more open space and open land. So I tried to make the comparative to something similar versus something like Roswell or Alpharetta. So no, that question, it's not it, Jason.
Does anybody else have a question? Okay, Mel?
Yeah, I think Mr. Duncan brings up some good points, and as does Mr. Corey and Mr. Seegers. Oftentimes, when we're considering changes in ordinances like this, we're, we're throwing back and forth percentages, and I don't, I'm not sure they all mean something. I think land development is a unique issue to deal with. There are many variables involved in developing land, topography being one of the major ones here. I would like to see further discussion on it, find out what developers have here, home builders, people who have invested in this, in the community, get some more feedback on it, and I would, I'd like to see us defer it for 30 days if possible and get some more feedback from the community.
Anybody else have any?
I concur. I would be open to that.
I guess the concern I have, we've got some votes with ongoing issues right now. How could or would we address, address that? Is there a way to?
There really wouldn't be, because today's, the standard exists as 20%.
Right.
If we defer for 30 days, we can certainly do that, but the standard for the next 30 days will continue to be 20%.
Is there an exception process?
I guess you could go through a variance process, but that would be, that would be longer than 30 days.
Yeah. I, I mean, I certainly respect the, Bill's comments and all that, although I have seen, we have had several in the past where staffs had to work on it, and I do realize it's, again, I have a hard time, you know, as a, sitting up here with somebody that's spending their own money and design and doing something nice in the city of Milton, too, and trying to, within reason, hold it back or make decisions on that that affect them financially. Again, I, I think, you know, the 25% maybe, especially since before, I believe, as we went back to Fulton County, we didn't have any percentage, did we? Kathy?
Right. We didn't. There was none, and then we went to 20.
So, you know, I guess I have a little bit of a problem with that, but, so I would prefer, you know, addressing this now, but I'll have to defer to council, obviously, the majority. Bert?
It seems, you know, we've heard tonight, we've heard of two subdivisions. We've heard of the Manor, you know, I think, you know, longgo, ongoing in the Hayfield this evening. Would it make any sense that as those are gated in private neighborhoods, that we can look at something for private neighborhoods, gated neighborhoods, if it's not public right-of-way versus open, open, free neighborhoods in the public right-of-way?
Is that a legal?
I think you, yes, if you allow me to respond to that, a couple of, a couple of things. One is, even though this is on the zoning agenda tonight, should there be the desire of the council to defer it into the future? I'm not suggesting that that will be the recommendation. It could come back as quick as June the first, which is two weeks from tonight. That's, I just want to respond in that, so it doesn't have to be a whole month. Number two is, I think you can. And I had that conversation with our city attorney today. He's not here and unable to be with us tonight, but we had that specific conversation. And the thing he cautioned me, and the thing he told me that I should say if that question was brought up, was that as long as we decide to do something and apply it uniformly and fairly across the whole city, if everybody's situated in the same condition, you can do it. So if your condition is that, this is a neighborhood that is only accessible to the public by invite or to the owners or guests of the owners, and not subject to the public passing by or passing through as, at will, you can apply a different standard in that circumstance than you do to neighborhoods that would have public infrastructure in it, so long as you do it to all of them. And that would be then any privatized neighborhood.
Along that, my other thought was potentially subdivisions that were platted already, that were already built, obviously had lot size, type of house, and that sort of thing in mind, if that could also, or in lieu of be another determining factor.
I've done more thinking of that since we talked earlier, and I have not been able to get the city attorney on the phone, so I'm going to give you what my thought is, subject to that disclaimer. And even, even though the neighborhood is platted and the lots were identified as individual lots of record in that subdivision, the actual building on the lot or the development of the lot, if it occurred post-June of 2014 when the standard is in place, I believe because the condition could be complied with, it would have to be complied with. So I don't know that there's anything that necessarily grandfather's in a certain design or development option because of when the neighborhood itself was actually recorded. I'd have to confirm that, but my gut is that's what, is that's what we'd hear from our city attorney.
To Councilperson Hewitt's question about the private versus public neighborhoods or gated neighborhood, is that something, a decision, if, wanted to bring up motion, is that a decision we can make tonight, or would that need to be advertised? And do you not?
You know, the advertisement relates to this section, and it relates to, to the particular notion of whether or not a percentage should be increased. If you use your discretion as counsel to increase it in only certain circumstances, so long as that's uniform, I think you're still within the scope of what you could do tonight if you wanted to.
Anybody else? Rick? Just go and say, do we know specifically the concerns that Mr. Duncan referenced that he was requesting further consideration on?
I know, and Lee and I, we've played phone tag now for about three days, it seems. He and I haven't communicated today, but I believe what there's some thought of is to how neighborhoods that would have specific architectural standards already in place that might be as equal to or exceed our architectural standards as to whether or not there's a different model there that could be used, so that there's less conformance with dual sets of mandatory requirements. I think that's probably what we'd hear in, if that's not what we'd hear, I apologize, but that's just kind of, is Lee nodding his head up and down this way or this way?
I think he's raised his hand.
That'll be totally up to y'all if you allow additional public.
Well, I think, I think the, to the public comment from the Manor, I think there's been, you know, more, different issues, too, with the Manor and all that versus just lot size coverage that we're talking about tonight. So, you know, I certainly think moving forward, we could certainly, you know, work together with some folks and get some, some ideas and all that, but I think that's a little more holistic than just the lot size right now. So it may be two things that we look at doing moving forward, so.
Yeah, the only other, that other thing, I guess, would be height, which I've heard tonight as far as one of those issues, though I don't see that addressed in this.
You know, that's why I say this is just, maybe some more overall issues we need to look at, but.
Well, if height was an issue, could we, maybe we could, should we include that in this or no? I mean, that was just an idea.
I believe that would get you outside of the scope of what's up. Because you speak specifically of relating to lot coverage.
My opinion is to Mr. Duncan's suggestion is that maybe that is something we want to do, but obviously this is kind of a, a single issue right here, so, you know, I guess we have a couple options open for motions, or, you know, we have the option possibly doing, separating the two, but you're allowed to look across the city, defer, denial, or approve, so. I'll open up. Bill?
And Rick brought it up. I'd be interested to, to hear what Mr. Duncan has to say further to this topic, and if it's, and I believe it just goes beyond the development of one development here, the Manor. If there's an improvement that could be realized in developing all of the other developments in the city, through that discussion, I think it has a lot of merit. And in two weeks' time, I'm not sure who we're going to be holding up as far as building permits or review is out there, but it seems like a short period of time to, to consider something like this and to get more information, and especially from those folks that are working in this field every day.
Again, I, Mr. Duncan's welcome to address that. I just want to make sure we're not looking at two different things here, so. Do you have any comments, Mr. Duncan? Since Councilmember Luss asked a question, I'd be glad to.
I think that, and I'm in your position on a, in Sandy Springs, I think the appropriate action, and I hear Chris suggesting you take, is to consider the action in front of you and then possibly go forward with another action where you're directing staff to move on a different direction, or suggest to staff to investigate more fully other options that might be available. And to that extent, we're more than willing to sit down with you, both from the developer's standpoint and from the HOA standpoint, to provide you with options that we think might be appropriate and would enhance the abilities of Milton to attract higher and better development than what you're, you're looking at. But you're doing a good job right now, but I think you can do a better job. So my, I support what's being presented to you tonight. I just think that it only goes a little ways. And I think that there's, there's a long, there's a bigger step that can be taken that's in front of you right now that is going to require our staff to get some sort of a green light from you to say, yes, we want to look at this more closely, we want to investigate this more thoroughly, come back to us at such and such date, or whatever that, that might be. So that's, that's my recommendation to you tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Duncan? And Rick, you have a question?
Yeah, so you're, basically, you're saying you support the 25%. You support the increase. You see some additional things that maybe could be improved upon, but you're not against the basis of the ordinance, same thing?
It's, it's an improvement over what we've been having to deal with in the past. Your question that you pull out of, I mean, we've had issues here that, it seems like once a month, there's an issue coming up that deals with this ordinance. And, you know, I get the phone call from the builder, and then I got to go fight with the HOA about what was, what was presented and approved, and then I got to carry that fight from the HOA into your offices, and then we got to figure out a way to adapt the ordinance or adapt the product or something here, and it just is not necessary. There's an easier way to do it, and we can, I think we can help you get there. So I don't need to be burning up time with the mayor and other members of the city council. I don't need to be burning up time with your staff on things such as this, when we can go in and solve it now.
Okay. Anybody else have a question? I, you know, again, to go back to what I said earlier, and I believe Mr. Duncan confirmed, you know, the Manor's had some issues, but that's further reaching than just the, the lot size. So again, as I said a little bit ago, and what Mr. Duncan just confirmed, you know, possibly we, we separate the two. We've got an item before us, but then we may want to direct staff to, to work with you guys to come up with some other ideas that might work better, and they can bring back to the council for a decision on that, so. Matt?
I'll make a motion if anybody's ready. I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 15-123.
Have a second? I'll second it.
I'll go for a friendly amendment that we further direct staff to meet with these local communities to further enhance the usefulness and effectiveness of this ordinance.
Is that, and just to clarify, Chris, is that, so I guess what it sounds like we're doing, we got a motion to approve this item in front of us, but we'd also like to give direction that staff move forward on this other item, the other issue we're talking about. I don't know that we tie the two together.
Yes, and I think, I understand exactly what that direction is, and I'll take that direction. I think that a couple of those words are difficult to define in the motion, like what the word "enhance" means, so it probably is better if we keep the motion fairly straightforward, but then I'll, absolutely, that's perfect direction.
Is that the direction?
Take direction.
Is that the direction of the council in general to move forward as an approval, if it's an improvement, to, to work together and bring something else back to us overall that we can learn from?
I've heard that, then, in the council, so I don't need that as part of the motion.
Yeah, the tenant, the direction is.
I have a question I'd like to ask the motion maker. Would you, would you consider limiting it to private developments?
Yeah, I could do that. We can make that change later on.
You want to clear, I think the clarification on that would be to a private subdivision versus a, a public subdivision.
I don't know.
Why would we differentiate, I guess, if we're going to do, that's, I guess, my question, why would we be differentiating if we're going to still work for the enhancements?
Well, we can look at it at the enhancements time, but my thoughts process where, as Chris mentioned, that folks that are in private neighborhoods, gated-type neighborhoods, know what they're getting into when they go in there. It's not necessarily, you know, part of the reason for this, this, for the view shed and, and, and the rural views, and if you're in a private neighborhood, you know what you're getting into, you know, you're not turning right in there to go see what you can see, you're, you're going in there for a specific reason to visit or live. So that was my, my thoughts behind that.
Well, we've got the motion. We don't have a second yet, but Bill, won't you come?
Maybe to Bert's point there, I think there's differentiation amongst different developments out there as far as development standards and their, their covenants, and so, to make broadly, or just to differentiate between private developments, I'm not sure that's, I don't think we'd be restricting it at this point.
Mr. Mayor, can I interrupt you just real quickly? You've got a motion, but if, you just indicated you don't have a second. You're kind of in discussion, so we need to get a second.
I think you, you got a friendly amendment, right?
Yes.
But it wasn't a second.
It is a second? Okay, so we do have a motion.
Okay, we've got a motion. Okay, so right now, then, I believe our motion is for approval.
As read.
As is, and then you've got a second. Bill, you're just, your friendly amendment was just to get the direction.
Discussion was asked. For an amendment on that.
Okay. If, if you've captured that, Sudi, then I'm okay with that, if we've got a motion and a second.
So the motion and the second is to approve Agenda Item 15123 as presented?
Yep. Now I'll open for discussion, if there's any discussion.
Like I just said. And I don't know, were all the speakers that were here tonight, are they all in gated communities? I assume everyone was. I just want to verify.
I believe that they are. If I could, if I could take this discussion as you have it and just frame it around the, the context of it being lots that front private roads, as opposed to there being a nuance of gating in there, because what I think, what I heard Councilmember Hewitt talk about is it, is lots that would front a private road, and that's, there could be a distinction there. There could be private roads in Milton that are not in gated neighborhoods.
So every one of the speakers that were here were on a private road?
As I captured the address, I captured two neighborhoods that were in, that were, yes, comprised of private roads.
Okay, so procedurally, we have a motion and a second.
With discussion for an amendment.
So, you know, we've discussed it, so you can move forward as is, or if you want to.
So if I want to make an amendment, I would basically say that it would be approval of the agenda item with the amendment that it would affect only lots that front, subdivisions with lots that front a private road. Is that the correct terms?
Or you really, did you mean lots that are front of private roads?
Or just lots in general? Not subdivisions, just lots?
That, that front of a private road, that, that's correct. And what you're, what you're doing, and I think probably if you're going to go down that road, we should be more specific and not necessarily approve this item, but approve exactly what your, what the, or, to make the motion, what the actual concept is, and that is to change the lot coverage requirement, maximum lot coverage requirement from 20% to 25% on lots that front private roadways. That's essentially what that amend, what your amended motion would be.
Got you.
If that's what you want to do.
That makes sense. So the motion would be then to approve the Agenda Item Number with the change from the lot coverage of 20% to 25% on lots that front private roads. That's the terminology. Okay. So that would be my motion.
When you guys said 20%. Okay. Bill, do you want to second that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. For, you guys, did you hear the, the motion? You've got it captured, Chris, basically. Leave 20% lot coverage in general and up, up to 25% lot coverage on lots that, that are on a private road, private street.
For the purposes of just clarifying and making sure the record is as clean as we can make it, there's also a second section in that, in the amendment that dealt with the lands that were zoned certain ways that were not a part of the Birmingham crossroads. I would, just for the record, like the maker of the motion to acknowledge that... I would, just for the record, like the maker of the motion to acknowledge that the remainder of the changes stay in effect. And the only thing that you're changing is where the 25% is applied.
Correct.
Okay. So make sure number two gets captured as well and doesn't fall off.
Okay. All right, I've got the, the motion and, and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. That did close that public hearing, did not, Sudi. It's closed now, for sure. Okay. All right, thank you. We'll move on. A couple of things I want to, want to say, I was honored to, this weekend, to do my officiate at my first wedding, so.
Courtney and Franco got married, and I was, I did the wedding, so. So it was, it was good. Something I want to talk about before I go into staff, I've been, been working on, on this for a couple of weeks. I, my big concern, we all know as far as conservation and, and what, what the vision of the city is, I think we are between what the majority of our citizens want, between what our vision is, our published vision and, and the council, I think we're all on the, on the same page, we're real, real close to it. And what I got concerned about is we're looking at individual items, and I'll just use the conservation subdivision ordinance as, as one example. I think folks kind of sometimes forget seeing the big picture and are looking at, at individual items. And, and a good example on that, there was a lot of passion and a lot of effort put forward as we moved through, looking at conservation subdivisions, and there's a diverse, you know, opinion on it, and we're, we're getting it from all sides, from, from our community. And I really think it's because what's very important to everybody is the look and feel of Milton and what we have now and moving in the future, trying to conserve or preserve, I know those are two different words, of what we have. And I think everybody's focused on one thing, thinking that's the only thing, when in reality, if you look at the big picture, we've got a lot of things that some of the city's already done and that people aren't aware of, or we're just, we're getting focused on other things. And also some, some things we can do in the future. And I often have a, you know, talk to a lot of people, and everybody likes to say, you know, well, why don't you guys, as the city, just stop all the development? Or, and, and the reality is, a lot of it that's out, the majority of it now is AG1. It's been zoned for years for that. The property owners, the developers, and the buyers have their rights to do that. The reason it seems like there's a lot is there's, you know, been a five to seven year halt where nothing was done, so there was some pent up demand, and so all of a sudden it seems like there's a lot of single family development, when if you average it out over five years, it may not be. But I do, you know, we have a lot of people say, why don't, why don't the city, the city just stop development, or why don't you go in and take AG1 land and, and, you know, instead of one acre minimum, turn it into three acre minimum or five acre minimum? And the reality of that is, number one, it's not legal taking rights away that somebody already had with their zoning when they bought it, but number two, I don't know that morally it's right either. It's, you know, it's like anything else, if someone's paid for land and, and paying taxes on it and bought it in a certain zone, and it's one thing if they brought it forward and wanted to rezone it to benefit them, but as a city, we just legally, and, and again morally, I don't, we can't just go and, and cut their, cut their value, so to speak. With that being said, I, I certainly, just like I said early on, I, I believe the council and our citizens certainly want to do all we can so that the landscape doesn't change. You know, it's kind of a quandrum, you get, everybody wants to move here because it's so beautiful, but if we don't look out, you know, it's, one day it's not going to be, because even if it's, you know, stays at one acre lots and everything gets developed out, it's, it's, you know, it's not going to be like it is now. So anyways, that being said, what I'd like to kind of propose is a, an initiative, and I'm calling it Legacy Milton Initiative, and that's the reason I say legacy, I'm, I'm hoping it's something that myself and the council here, along with the, the supportive staff, can put something in place that will be far reaching and, you know, 50 years from now, when we're not around, I don't have a crystal ball, and we don't know exactly what it's going to look like, but hopefully it'll be, it can be different and better than it would if, if obviously we hadn't done anything. So what I'd like to do with, with council here is, I've just kind of come up with some notes and a, a plan, and basically what I tried to do is encapsulate the things that we've already done on the conservation side, but also some new ideas too. And won't necessarily go over them all tonight, but I'm thinking, let you guys look at it, get your input, have a work session with the public, look at it, and basically, for lack of better terms, market the fact that Milton is different. We've got all these things, we can educate the landowners, the, the citizens, everybody can be a part of it, and we can have a lot of positive things that will incentivize folks to, to want to preserve things. And, and a couple of things that stick out, you know, I, I would love to, and it's been brought up, and I propose on here that we do a, a green space bond, which has been talked about, but the fair thing about that is that lets the actual citizens of Milton vote on and decide if we want to spend money to preserve land, and they can make the decision, you know, if we want to increase their taxes $100 a year, $200 a year. My guess is they would if we can raise some money and, and buy some, some land to preserve indefinitely. So that's one item. You know, another thing, I know we're talking about impact fees, whereas, you know, the thing about impact fees, obviously, they hit someone's pocketbook, but, but in a way they're a fair, fair way, because as new people move here, it's money that the city can use for infrastructure. Or possibly we could even look at maybe purchasing green space, we'll have to see legally. But on the flip side, what, what I realized, again, going back to my comment about, you can't, you can't come in and take somebody's rights away from them, but if we enact impact fees and they sting just a little bit, and the city can take some money to fix infrastructure or do other things that benefit all the citizens, we also have a tool there or something that we can, or care that we can give back to a developer. If, you know, the developer's legally can put one acre lots on a, on a, on a piece of land, but they've got a, a impact fees, we could also work up some kind of sliding scale where if they make the lots bigger at a certain point, then we can, can waive the impact fees. So, you know, those are some positive things we can do. But between that, raising some money and buying some, you know, buying some land to conserve, along with several other things that we already have in place, the TDRs and other things that our, our consultants have been working on and our staff and, and the council. So what I'd like to do tonight is I just want to hand, hand this out to you, let you guys be looking at it, and then schedule a work session and get everybody's input and all that, and maybe between all that, we can tweak it and come up with a plan moving forward and, and do a resolution and basically get out and market the city that, you know, this is what, what we're going to do to make this happen. And again, it'd be a team effort with our citizens, our developers, our, our city staff and, and the council. So other than that, I'll just, I'll, I'll hand these, these out to the guys and take a look at them and look forward to working together, trying to come up with a, a lot of good things in the future. I don't know if anybody has any comments on that. If you look on the back, it's, it's, front mentions some things, and on the back, it, it goes into a little bit of explanation. Again, none of these are set in stone, some of these are already in place, some of them are not, some of them we can talk about doing if, if, you know, council wants to do, we can move forward. If, if we want to tweak some things, we, we can. But other than that, I just, you know, wanted to get that out and get working, working on that, and if everybody agrees, we can, like I said, have a work session and, and study it further and put a plan in place and move forward.
Well, I think that's what it sounds like this might do, is, is bring sort of everything under one umbrella versus looking at it, you know, targeted here, 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 see how all those things work together and create the toolbox we've been talking about, the tools then.
Okay. All right, then anybody else on council have anything?
Memorial Day is, is coming Monday, mentioned it previously. Our keynote speaker is going to be Captain Donna Rowe. She was the chief nurse at the Third Field Hospital in Tonsonut, outside of Saigon. I've heard her speak before. Very motivating speaker, and I think everybody will enjoy hearing her this coming Monday. Our typical program, I believe it's on the website right now, but I encourage everybody to come over. This event has grown exponentially over the last eight years, and we're hoping to have a record turnout again on Monday, so.
Good deal. And I, I do want to say, you know, and it was mentioned earlier, but thanks to Councilmember Lusk for your initiative. You started with the crosses this weekend, Councilmember Lusk and Councilmember McCunt's out there, and several volunteers and, and other citizens and, you know, anybody else who's out there and, and staff and, and whatnot, but just want to thank you guys because what you've done has started that, that, by starting that and having that every year tradition, I think people really, I think people are touched when they drive through Milton and, and see that, so thank you very much.
It involves a lot of the participation of staff and, of course, the community out here, and I think they're the biggest benefactors. It's a reminder of freedom and, and how we got, got there and how we continue to stay free. And it's through the efforts of the names on those 414 crosses right now that's made it happen, and these nine students here that we presented a proclamation to tonight, it's that continuing commitment out there that's important, and we need to recognize it and, and remember it.
Yeah, thank you. Matt, did you have something you want to?
Yeah, it's still my thunder. That's okay. But I also, I also want to congratulate Bill Lusk too, as the president of the Friends of the Milton Library. Our new library will open up on July 16th or thereabouts, depending on weather. And we're making progress, and, and Bill is helping to build our, our barn that's going to house the 10,000 books that's in there as well. So we're, that is coming along, and for our community, it's going to be a, a very good thing, and so the community's very excited. Just as announcement, want to say, good job with that again, Bill.
It's not up yet.
It's not up yet. But he'll do, I, I know, I, I know it's in good hands.
Well, thanks, guys. And we'll move on to our staff reports. Chris?
Mayor, council, we've got the five departments that'll be presenting briefly tonight to you in just a second. I'll let you know that one of the things that we're going to be having later this week is a first almost, just a phone information session with our bond council to talk about the, the green space initiative that you just brought up at, during, during your mayor report. And I'll also let you know that Birmingham Falls Elementary School kept me on my toes this morning. I was there from 8:00 to 2:00 in a career day, didn't have one single kid decide at the end of my presentation they wanted to be a city manager. They still wanted to be baseball players, doctors, veterinarians, and artists, but one of these days I'll convert one over somehow. So, all right, we've got five department reports for you tonight, and I think we're getting, we're getting better at these as we, as we move along, and maybe hoping to find the information that you're looking for. We'll start with Chief Edgar.
Mayor, council, I believe you have a copy of our monthly stats in front of you, and if you have any questions on those, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll just jump into some of the highlights for the, for the last few weeks. We had a structure fire on Bethany Way just about 10 days ago. The home suffered heavy damage, but the fire crews did an excellent job between Alpharetta and Milton, working together to save the structure. We would classify that as a room and contents fire with heavy, heavy damage. But the structure is still standing, and it looks like it'll be able to be saved at some point here, so.
Okay.
The new digital radio system, I'm pleased to say that it is working as it was designed, and our coverage is excellent, communication is excellent, no dead zones or anything, so we're, we're pleased to, to report that. We completed CPR training or recertification training for all the police officers in the police department. Our MDA boot drive, we completed our last drive on, collection on Friday, and I'm going to go out on a limb here, but I'm estimating that we're close to $75,000. And that's just six days of collecting. So again, thank you to the community and everybody who travels through Milton, supporting us in the MDA. That's pretty amazing. Public Safety Fair, we're having that on Friday, the 22nd, and Saturday, the 23rd, at Fry's. We've done this in the past. I, I get the opportunity to let you know that it's coming up and invite you to join us and come out and have some hot dogs and some drinks with us, and we'll have a static display of fire and police apparatus and personnel out there on Saturday. And then Chief Kokoff can probably give you an update on how well that went on his report next week. And that runs from 11:00 a.m. till 3:00 p.m.
Is that both days, Chief?
The static display is Fri-, on Saturday only, Friday is just, we're out there cooking hot dogs, so.
Okay.
We, as Chris said, we participated in several elementary and middle school career day events throughout the last few weeks here, which has always been fun, and they tend to like firefight, being a firefighter a lot more than a city manager, I believe, but.
Oh, I heard all about it.
And being the full service fire department that we are, we did rescue a four foot king snake from probably certain death from a home here in Milton, and we were able to release that snake back out into the wild.
I appreciate it.
So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Chief? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go next, finance. And briefly, mid-year budget, budget adjustments are coming up on June 1st. We'll be discussing those in a public hearing and consideration for approval. The Open Gov Transparency Model was rolled out, soft launch with the website on May 7th. I have not heard any feedback from the public, so I'm sure it's just completely awesome. Everybody loves it. Matt, have you had time to play with it?
Not yet. I'm working on it though.
And the ENCODE Business License Module, this is a new module that we're bringing, bringing in-house or bringing online. The Go Live is scheduled for June 1st. We hope to improve the efficiency of issuing business licenses and, and reporting and keeping up with that. Tax sale, our next scheduled tax sale occurs on June 2nd. The last time we published are the listing of the properties that are considered for tax sale or possible considerations for tax sale, there's around 20 properties that have tiling with taxes. We, we won't come near to that number whenever we actually hold, hold a tax sale. It could be three, four maybe, that we actually bring to tax sale. So really on the lookout for that, that's on June 2nd. If you have any other questions, if you have any.
Any questions, staff? All right. Thank you. Hi, Chief.
Are you taking notes?
Carter, did you notice that you weren't on there?
The next time.
The next time. What happened?
I'll do the second.
Oh, yeah, okay. Next year, you'll be on there. Okay. Hi, Dave, sorry.
Mayor, council, you have my stats. I'd say, in looking at the stats, we go off what ICMA gives us to work with, it's actually pretty light in the IT realm, and there's, there's a lot of moving parts in IT, and we only had a few questions that we could really answer. So if, if you ever get to a point where you'd like to have more stats than what, what you're getting at the time, I'm totally open to, to get a new criteria to look at, if you have any questions for that. Having said that, just a few things in the last month, we did have a server fail over the weekend of April 25th, and that was down pretty much the whole weekend, but we got it back up and running again before the following Monday morning when everyone showed up to work. After that, we did add a new server, which was not timed in concert with that, but was pretty fortuitous that we could pick up some of the workload that that one, the failed server, had been working on. And so we're expanding our infrastructure here to support more data in a single place, and also giving it room to grow in the future in, in the ways that VC- And so, we're expanding our infrastructure here to support more data in a single place and also giving it room to grow in the future in, in the ways that VC3 is not covering. And on that note too, we are still on track to get our new circuit installed, installed in the next week and get connected to them and start moving our folks up to the cloud. We are also offering now internet service or internet access at the Byrd Senior Center. We'll be moving some computers up there as well and for the seniors to use when they're at the senior center. I can answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Dave? Okay, good deal. All right, next.
Hello, how's everybody doing? Okay, so you see our stats there for the website statistics and everything. Just keep in mind, that's bound to change a little bit since we did launch the website on the 7th. I am prepared tonight, if you guys wanted just a quick tour through the site just to see some of the really neat things it can do as far as the capabilities of the dashboard, the financial transparency tool that Stacy was able to procure, some of the analytics that we have on there and how we plan to expand that. So, that's up to you guys if not.
Where is that financial transparency?
Okay, it's, um.
That's why I haven't seen it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, check under, if you go to the site, under analytics, on the dashboard, under analytics, we've, we've got just a bunch of analytics there and financial transparency is there. It's also under finance in your government. Yeah, I imagine you can get lost in that for days because it is a really, really nice, powerful tool. Since the website has been launched, I'm now pivoting on the virtualization processes. So, I've been working with Jill from Meritage and Ty Hardison with Vantage Card Services. We're going to set up a merchant account for our online payments of permits and things like that. We're going to work with Michelle and myself and Wade Green are going to be working on getting all of our, the, the more heavy workflow permits and processes and stuff all online. I'm also working on getting just a, a payment option available for the really light workflow things that I can just build out the forms myself. So, like, you know, paying your, your money for CPR Saturday or paying the, the fee to be a part of Citizens Police Academy, renting a field. So, Bernadette was nice enough to give me all the general ledger accounts for the different things that we'd want to do. And so, I'm going to be working with them to get that set up and then we should be moving on those. I also did want to talk about Angela and Courtney. Angela continues her stellar work and engagement. I'm sure you've seen the level of content that we're able to put out on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, YouTube. Our numbers just keep improving and the quality of content that's coming out of the offices is really something to behold. And I'd also like to thank Courtney for her efforts in special events. Milton Jubilee was a great little event. Expect to see that grow as the years go by. We are building out the Milton Market. First one will be May 23rd, Saturday, May 23rd, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. It will have both, be farmers markets and food trucks right there at Broadwell Pavilion. So, that, and then that will go through the summer and it will also have the movies. So, once the farmer's market ends at about dusk, you could go over and you can watch a movie at Friendship Park. And we'll have some food trucks there and stuff like that. So, it should be a really great summer for us in terms of the types of relationships that we're able to build, not only at special events and things like that, but then also people being able to interact with their government online in a space that they really choose to interact on. And then I also wanted to just touch on, when the Byrd House and/or the library come online, we have been working, especially through Wayne Boston, to have some really interesting special events that speak to the function of those buildings. Like the Byrd House, we've been kicking this idea around of almost like where you go and you do dinner at a Milton restaurant and then you go to the Byrd House and we might have some local entertainment or an author doing a reading. Wayne has really been working with the Milton Literary Group to get some things planned for the, the library. You know, things just as neat as storytelling festivals or local authors who bring cultural events and arts events in. So, just please understand that as the Byrd House comes online, as the library comes online, City Hall, other things that we are building, we are planning ahead to have all sorts of just neat, you know, things you don't have all the time in, in these, these communities. We're trying to bring something a little bit different to really approach a different segment of the Milton population than, than, that we've not necessarily been hitting before. You think? Yes, sir.
I like some of the stuff we've been seeing on Facebook posts. Can you tell me who actually came up with the idea and why I wear the badge Facebook campaign?
That is a national campaign as part of Kathy Feis, who does the police Facebook and Twitter, is awesome. And she picked that up to run and so we've been sharing her work. So, that's all Kathy Feis.
See, I'd like to commend, I think that's great, especially in light of some of the pressures we've seen nationally. I think that was needed. I think it's great also lets the community or sign up, get to know some of our officers and understand why they're out there serving versus it's just the police. I thought, I think it's a very positive initiative.
Absolutely, yeah. Kathy is a master at finding wonderful ways to connect the police with our residents. And yeah, that gets us tons of traction on Twitter and yeah, absolutely.
All right, Jason, do you have any other questions?
Thank you too. I mean, a lot of these things, as I've always said, you know, what I think we're more proud of is not just the bricks and sticks, but it's building the community in the sense of, you know, having something different out there and different events and just see people get together and bonding and feeling good about their city, so.
Absolutely. You're about to see a summer of a lot of interaction force.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Thank you.
Sam, I think, do you guys want to postpone? Do Sam's live?
Is this a long one?
I think I'm done, actually. No, thank you.
What changed?
Well, very little changed, actually, as Chris said, not hardly anything. The big one is, we did have an employee leave us, Tom Gillum, who was in Parks and Rec, left to be the director in, I think it's Canton. So, we give him a lot of credit for that and moving up and it's creating a good opportunity there. I'm showing two vacancies currently with the city. Actually, as of today, it's just one, Tom's job. So, we're just about at full employment, for full-time positions. Nothing else really changed. Our numbers on health insurance remain about the same. We had a real good month from a safety and risk standpoint. We didn't have any vehicle accidents or work comp injuries. That rapidly changed in May and you'll see those next month. And that's really about all I had. Any questions, I'm happy to.
Any questions for Sam? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Okay, anything else, Chris?
No, this, this, I guess wraps up our six weeks in a row that we always get right after spring break. So, it seems as, now you get a couple of weeks, a couple of weeks off of Memorial Day and then we'll be back on June 1st, so. I don't have anything else.
Thank you, everybody. Go have a motion if we adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.